All right, good evening, everyone. I would ask that you please rise as we welcome Pastor Eric. Cornerstone Church to lead us in the vacation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, in light of what's happened in our nation the last couple of days, and even with this season of the Republican and Democratic conventions, we just want to come before you and first of all, thank you that you are sovereign over all. And we ask you for peace and safety in our nation. We say, "Your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven." And then for this meeting here today, Lord, we pray for wisdom. We pray for guidance. I pray for the direction of your Holy Spirit. We pray for the good of the people of Fergus Falls. We lift this up to you in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen. And the pledge now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 July 15, 2024. And we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Joe.
Here.
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 Rachel is absent.
Here.
Here.
And we have a quorum. First item this evening will be the open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any item that's not on the agenda, feel free to step to the lectern at this time. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Cecily Cookman. I'm a resident of Fergus Falls. From the last meeting, July 1st, I keep having more and more questions coming up in my head about the golf course. And then when I share this with people that I know, there's more information that comes open also. So I just wanted to project some of those questions that I have and wondering what's happening with them. The loan or line of credit that was written off in 2017 for $330,000, is that going to become payable or is that going to be a true loss for the city? You know, we're giving them a $4 million or $3 million golf course, and we're losing even more so from a write-off from 2017. That's rather distressing. And with giving or selling this for a dollar, the $3 million, how does that deplete our assets as a city? What percentage of the city's assets is that? And I guess I'm curious as to how that affects our bonding capabilities, our loan capabilities. You know, what kind of legs are we going to be put on after we sell this for a dollar? On another note, I'm wondering, looking at all of you, wondering, is there any conflicts of interest? There was nothing shared at last meeting. There were several people sharing that they do golf. And so I'm wondering, nothing was brought up as who is eligible to be voting on this? And also for the staff? Are they being, if they're part of this golf association, are they being allowed to write their own contract? Is there a conflict there also? Just several questions that come up in my head, and I appreciate you listening to those. You know, it just seems a bit odd that we would be giving this away for a dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecily. I guess I'm looking at Andrew, but I know that we have answers to some of those questions. Make sure we're going to get answers to all those questions. They're important questions. I think the answers are fairly straightforward, but I want to make sure that they're accurate and they're full. And we're going to present that in one package next council meeting for you, Cecily. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come before the council this evening?
Mark Leighton. I read the draft of the minutes from last meeting. It seems like my presentation didn't reflect the whole story. And I think it's important that the council, any council member, make some comments in regards to updating those minutes based on the comments I made. I believe my message was basically, when Mortenson wasn't voted in, that there were council people who did not follow their oath, who did not follow their code of ethics. It's quite obvious that these people have some animosities towards Mr. Mortenson. And I don't believe that is justice for them to vote. No. Secondly, I don't know if I have an answer in regards to when the council was aware of Mr. Thompson living in Dalton and why they relied on his letter of resignation when it should have been acted on before. So those are my two points. I would like to see the minutes reflect my total presentation and when did the city find it appropriate or not appropriate to call Mr. Thompson out because he was living in Dalton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff and council members. I'm Lisa Workman with the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to give the city staff, you as leaders in our community, a huge thank you for your support of Shop Move and Groove last week at the Speeze Riverfront Park. It was a fantastic location to gather the community together, even though the heat was sweltering. Kids, families, folks were having a great time. A lot of music was enjoyed. During our summer shopping spree giveaway, we tracked more than $30,000 spent at just 20 local businesses. So we want to thank you for supporting our business community. But again, thank you to city staff. They did an outstanding job of accommodating some special requests that we had to make the event successful, and they were very responsive. It was just, it was electric downtown. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And to you and your organization, all your staff for putting on that event that benefits the entire community. Thank you. It was a tremendous success. Anyone else wishing to come before the council? Seeing that, we will move along. I will turn to our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, for any changes to the agenda as presented.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Council members, Councilmember Hicks has asked that item number seven be removed from the consent agenda for additional discussion. Other than that, I have not heard of any other changes, Your Honor.
I would look for a motion then to approve the agenda minus item number seven from the consent agenda.
I'll opt for that.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Jim. Laura and Jim. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. There are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we have three items. The first is a resolution acknowledging the retirement in 25 years of service of city employee Kevin Ayler. Whereas, and I will read that resolution. Whereas Kevin Ayler submitted his intent to retire effective August 2, 2024, and whereas Kevin was hired as a refuse carrier on August 30, 1999, whereas on December 17, 2001, he transferred to a loader operator at the Burner, and whereas on March 3, 2004, he became a light equipment operator. And whereas on April 20, 2015, Kevin moved to the position of recycling driver, a position he has held since that time. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by the city of Fergus Falls and the city council to accept the resignation of Kevin Ayler and thank him for his 25 years of dedicated service as an employee to the city of Fergus Falls. The above foregoing resolution was offered at a regular city council member or meeting on July 15, 2024 by council member Jim Fish, who moved its adoption and was seconded by council member Scott Kwame and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call.
Joe.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Kevin Ayler, for those 25 years of service to the city of Fergus Falls. Next is an update on the Charter Commission report. I will turn to our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Last Tuesday, the Charter Commission met. Within your packet was the entirety of the letter that was sent by Mark Hovland, who's the chair of the Charter Commission, talking about their conversation and how that meeting went. And tonight, I'm just providing this as an update kind of to circle back and come full circle on the request that the council made for the Charter Commission to review this. The Charter Commission did not elect to make any changes to the charter at this time. They did indicate that they will be looking more closely at charter language on vacancies in future meetings, but they feel like the current language should suffice for this vacancy. With that being said, I know the position of the council, or it seems the position of the council, is to allow the public to decide. And if that position were to change, we could discuss that at a future city council meeting. But for now, that's kind of the update that we're looking at.
Thank you, Andrew. Moving along.
Can we have some discussion?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah. Okay. I actually happen to be at that meeting along with Lori Mullen, who's in the crowd here tonight. I did try to reach out to Sparky, Mark Hovland, today to discuss a couple of things. But there's some things in here that I didn't quite understand if I wasn't listening or if I don't. I understand the forthwith and without delay, but I don't think it's going to impede the ability to conduct business. That was one comment by one of the Charter Commission members that if we're going to have missing council members, we're not going to get anything voted on and done, basically, was the statement made. I think the actual statement was, you know, this is kind of a mess and now the council has to sit in it. And which I had made mention, and I spoke from at the back of the room, that, you know, I was pretty proud that there was some things that were moving forward, like the golf course. And we did come together. We did make some decisions. So we do have positivity here on what's going on. Also, too, with the forthwith, I think, and I don't know how this would change. The way I took it when I left the meeting was that there would be no appointments. It was going to wait till the next general election. And then I don't know if it was discussed afterwards, if they were going to appoint that person, because that would be the forthwith as soon as possible, or if it's going to be in January, in the first meeting in January. But if you want to stick by that forthwith, which they were really pushing, I think that we need to look at seating that person who was elected in November the next day and let that person have that seat, because we are missing that seat. And the people are the ones who are voting for that person. So I think that, I would like to see something like that happen, is to get that person, whoever is elected, seated in November after the election. And I don't know how that proceeds. If anybody has any reaction to that or thoughts, or Rolf, maybe you've got some comments, I'm sure.
I do.
Okay. I'd like to hear them. But just step up to the mic so we can hear you.
I provided you a memo over a month ago on this and kind of gave you what my definition of forthwith is, and that means now. But in order to appoint somebody, you folks have to pass a resolution. And you can absolutely do what you're suggesting, Al, is if there's a successful election and there's a clear winner, you can certainly appoint that person immediately. And I'm assuming that they would probably have to qualify, you know, and do all those filings that would have to be done. But assuming they do all of that, and whatever, if they have some reports that they have to file with the, for the election with Lynn, and they do all of that timely and quickly, you could probably seat them, you know, as soon as possibly the next meeting, depending upon, you know, what they're obligated to do by law is fulfill their filing. So yes, you can do exactly what you suggest.
And I do understand that, you know, and I know that you had mentioned that before. I just wanted to, if we're not doing anything else, that's basically the forthwith. That's as soon as we can do it.
You can interpret forthwith like that. Personally, I think it means sooner, but I mean, but I get it. I get where the council.
But in a way, our.
You would have to certify that, the whole election first before we could do that.
So.
Yep. You've passed the canvas, and I think you do that like the Wednesday after.
Yep, usually before that committee, the whole meeting, and Wednesday after. And then if they had all the paperwork in, you can have it as an agenda item at that second meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you. Scott, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think there's probably a fair amount of conversation that could be had about this yet. And to that end, I would suggest that we bring it to our next committee, the whole meeting on July 31st.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
I mean, my comment was that, you know, the bylaws of the Charter Commission, because obviously the Charter Commission is sort of saying that they discuss, and they're not recommending any changes, and that they go by. They were looking for a recommendation from the council. But, I mean, I look upon the Charter Commission as like the, you know, the whys and, you know, for kind of establishing guidelines for the city. And when you read the bylaws of the Charter Commission, it says, "The city charter, which defines the parameters within which city government can operate as an independent body, the Charter Commission will represent citizens' viewpoints and consider the recommendations appropriate, revisions to the charter which balance the best interests of city government and the citizens." And so I think, you know, obviously, we did take a vote. You know, they kind of in their letter imply that, you know, the council failed to do its job. Well, the council did do a vote. The vote was four to three. We needed five to two. And outside of adopting rules, kind of like when they're trying to elect a new pope, where you've got to be locked in a room and wait kind of for the white smoke, I'm, you know, I think we were going back to the charter and asking them to be the whys and come back with a recommendation. And, you know, the Charter Commission, you know, we sent obviously 3125 back to them about, you know, seating a new council post the election on the first meeting of the month. And, you know, again, they kind of pushed back to say it wasn't, it wasn't up to them to do that. So, I mean, I think if that's the case, then I beg the question, why do we have the Charter Commission if they're not going to be engaged? I know why, but, you know, if they're not going to be, if they're not going to be engaged, then maybe, you know, maybe then we need some turnover on the Charter Commission, you know, of people that are going to be engaged in the process. So as opposed to just sending it back to the council, I think we were looking for kind of guidance as opposed to just saying, "We're not going to make any recommendations."
I think you're right about the fact that the charter is a kind of a well-reasoned commission.
They're not the hot heads that are in this room, basically.
But I also think the Charter Commission plays an important role on taking its time on important issues, too. And I have full, I have full confidence in the Charter Commission that they will give this a good shake. They will give it good discussion. They will come back with a recommendation, possibly with a change to the charter that makes some sense. But I think they, they're a slow and deliberative body, and I think you've got to give them the time to deliberate this and to discuss it fully. And so I fully envision for next year, when the Charter Commission starts looking at its schedule, it will take this issue up and it will come back with a recommendation that the Charter Commission feels is in the best interests of the city. So I'm confident, I have confidence in our Charter Commission. It's a well-diverse group of individuals. And we can't go without a Charter Commission. If we're going to be a charter city, we have to have a Charter Commission. And again, now, these charter members are generally appointed through their recommendation to the council, from the council's recommendation to the court. But ultimately, it's up to the judge, the chief judge of the district, that can appoint members. And if that judge wanted to just go to a phone book and pick out 14 names, that judge could do it. So the Charter Commission, city council work in concert in putting forth reasonable minds that can look at the charter and give it the review and time that it deserves to be one of the best documents that we have that operates and controls and provides us good guidance for our city governance.
Thanks, Rolf.
So I guess there's one more comment. You know, since they're kind of the governing body, too, or rulemaking and that sort of thing, don't you think it would be wise to maybe have those meetings videoed or recorded so actually the people can see how these decisions are being made? So there's no questions or things get left out? I know that there was, there was a question about minutes in the meeting on Tuesday morning. But I think that might be a good idea is to have that Charter Commission meetings recorded. There's not that many of them throughout the year that the people can actually see how this is done.
We'll show up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think coming back to council member Kwame's about putting it on the committee of the whole. I mean, under Article 3 of the commission's bylaws, it does say that the commission must act upon voters' petitions and council, city council recommendations. So maybe we need to make that recommendation to the Charter Commission so that then they have something to chew over.
So we can bring that up?
Yep. Or it can be a voter that does it through petition.
Yeah, well, go ahead, Lori.
Lori Mullen, 2840 Liquid Drive. I was at that meeting, and it gives me pause. I don't disagree with Rolf that it's an important commission, and just because of the way we're structured, we need a Charter Commission. The Charter Commission is not reflected on the city calendar. And that should be so people know. They can mark it in their calendars. The Charter Commission took all of 25 minutes to make their decision. I thought that was a little bit short-sighted. The, gave me pause because the secretary did not circulate the minutes. From what I could tell, maybe the agenda was reflecting the wrong minutes to begin with. The commission asked them if he could reflect back what the motion was, and he said he could not. And so pretty much everybody left, except, I would say probably five people stayed behind and did some wordsmithing. And so when I read the memo in the packet, it was not truly reflective of what the discussion was. I suggest, too, that the, that they take minutes, that people can go back and reflect on it if they need to. Definitely the forthwith that they talked about was seating that person after canvassing of the election. The one thing that they didn't want to do was to make some quick changes to fit the circumstances. And so that was a good comment. But certainly, if this is the governing body for the city, the agenda should be correct, the minutes should be correct. The memo was not even very reflective of what the discussion was. So that's my comments. I would ask the city, ask them for those additional items.
Thank you, Lori. All right.
Mark Leighton again. As a businessman, as a businessperson, politicking here goes against my grain. Let's have another meeting. Let's have another memo. I think Mr. Hicks indicated that the council should direct, and Lori said, too, "You're the governing body. I think you should lay out what guidelines you want. Tell the Charter Commission to say, 'This is what we want,' and get it done." I'm fearful every time I hear, "Well, we're going to take it to staff. We're going to take it to committee." No, Andrew says this, Ben says that, this guy says this. You represent the city, these eight people. And I think you should do what's best for the community. And obviously, the last presentation or the last deal that we ended up with a vacancy was poorly handled. So I strongly urge this council to step up, do its job, tell the Charter Commission what you want, and get it in bed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right, we'll move along to proclamation for Park and Recreation Week. Park and Recreation Month. All right, here we go. Whereas Park and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Fergus Falls. And whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness, improve the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and Parks and Recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Whereas Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas Park and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our communities. And Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient to the face of natural, in the face of natural disasters. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreation outdoors. Whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation's Month, and whereas the city of Fergus Falls recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, be it resolved that I, Benjamin Shire, the mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby designate the month of July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Fergus Falls. Thanks, Guy, to all of your staff. Seems like there's all kinds of months in your department, isn't there? Moving along to the consent agenda. There's eight items in our packet remaining, including on the board or on the screen that Lynn has put there. If anyone would like to remove any additional, we could do that. If not, I would entertain a resolution adopting those eight items. Thank you. I'd like to second that. Thank you, Scott. Anthony and Scott. Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution certifying election judges for the August 13, 2024 primary election. Anthony, you had a question or a comment?
I just had a couple of kind of questions. The one was, obviously, we have two members of city staff that are head judges. And I just wondered, how do we sort of like ensure that we don't have conflicts? And, you know, do we give them time off or do they book PTO for that work? You know, just so that the people basically know, you know, what rules we have in place on that?
I think it's a state law, correct?
Well, I'll defer to Lynn on how we actually select them. But in regards to the vacation question, it's a state law that you have to allow the ability to work. We do require they take time off to do those duties. So they are burning vacation time or other leave, E S S T, whatever they choose to do that during working hours. I'll defer to Lynn on how we select who's the head judge and.
Finding election judges is not the easiest task that I have. And I am very, very thankful for the people that step up and do the extra work to be qualified and having people that know a lot of people, that are good at decision-making, that are good at communicating and making decisions on the fly in the election place. So I know there's some staff members, or there's, you know, Rolf's wife is on that list of assistant judge as well. But we're really thankful for the people that do step up, and they've met all the qualifications, and they do take, like Andrew said, PTO time to do those duties.
Thank you. Does anyone like to offer a resolution?
I have a question also. There are two wards that have assistant judges. I have a question also. Uh, there, there are two wards that have assistant judges and two that don't. Is the reason because you can't find anybody to be assistant?
Right. So, we combined precincts for the March election and for the primary election because we could save costs. We don't have a lot of people turning out. Our, our voter turnout is between fifteen and twenty percent. So, the combining, um, where we have the assistants are people that are stepping up that have never been a head judge before, but are willing to do it in November. So they're doing it as a training exercise. They're, they're gonna see what it's all about and then they're gonna be running their own precinct come November.
Okay, thank you. Someone like to offer that resolution?
Um, I'll make that your honor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim.
Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Quaney.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Uh, under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a resolution, we'll look for the, a resolution approving the sale of two thousand twenty-four A bonds to finance the aquatic center, day lagoon park improvements, as well as street, uh, improvement projects. And we'll call on our city finance director, Bill Sommer. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, your honor, council. Um, so today we went for bids at eleven o'clock this morning, um, for bonds to finance the aquatic center, the day lagoon improvements, and then the street projects, um, over on Stanton and Summit, Linden and Laurel areas. Getting all those, um, bonds in place. So, um, those are the twenty twenty-four A bonds we're looking at. And, um, we were fortunate, we had twelve bidders for this, so more than we've had in the past, but with a larger bond issue like this of just about seventeen million dollars is what we were going out for, attracted, um, more bidders. When we came to you, um, so I suppose it's a couple of months ago now, the estimate was a true interest cost of about four point zero seven percent. And our low bidder today was TD Securities at three point three. So, um, a nice, a nice savings from what we were projecting. So we were going out for sixteen million, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, you'll see, um, we did go through a credit rating. So, um, I get interviewed by Moody's Investor Service and, um, go through our credit rating and we are again affirmed at double A three. We'll talk a little bit more about that on another slide. Now, look at the bottom note on this. Um, we did reduce the amount of the bonds from sixteen million, eight hundred and seventy thousand down to fourteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand because the purchaser is paying a premium for those bonds. So they're buying a higher interest rate. We take that off the principal. So we wind up with the same amount of money in our construction fund. We'll talk about that a little bit more as we get in here too. So sale and pricing, so, um, again, like I just mentioned, the bids came in with a premium offer, which has been happening for the last number of years. Granted, this is much larger because it's a much larger, um, bond issuance. But the reoffering premium was just about one point nine million dollars. You see that down on the bottom there where we also list that true interest cost at three point three. So, the underwriter is paying us more than the principal that we're putting out there. So they're purchasing a higher interest rate. So, they're gonna get coupon at a higher interest rate at five percent here. But we are decreasing the actual principal then that we're issuing. So the net impact is that true interest cost of three point three. And we leave that to Baker Tilly to calculate that all for us. But, um, in essence, um, we're getting the same amount of money in total with premium and the par that we're issuing to fund our project fund. And then we're paying that higher interest rate on a lower principal amount. We do not pay interest on that premium. That's just cash coming in. So that's where that saving comes from. Yep, we deposit the premium into the construction fund and then, yeah, no change in the total debt service for that. Um, so what are the bonds for? We've split them into the improvement portion, which is going towards the street projects. And then the sales tax portion, which is going for, um, the aquatic center and day lagoon. You can see paramount of the bonds there at fourteen point nine five million in total. Then there's that reoffering premium. And then the second half, the use of the funds shows where those funds are going. We're deposit to our construction fund, that's our capital project fund. We call that our fund number four oh three is the number of that one where we track all the project expenses. We have been paying project expenses, you know, over the last couple of years, probably, you know, between design, engineering, and even the start of construction, carrying all those costs in that project fund. So this will get deposited into that construction fund. We have the cost of the issuance and there is another slide that details those. But that's our, um, you know, Baker Tilly fees in there, our bond attorney fees are in there. Moody's Investor Service, um, you know, they charge us to give us a rating. Underwriter's discount there, that, um, is for that resale. And then a little bit of rounding. So here shows the sales tax portion of the bonds. You can see the principal, there's that coupon we talked about at five percent, um, because they bought that with a premium. The interest payments that'll be made and then total principal and interest over the next thirteen years. Again, these bonds are maturing, final maturity on February first of twenty thirty-eight. Our sales tax, we collect that through December thirty-first of twenty thirty-seven. So you collect for that full year, make the final payment then in, um, twenty thirty-eight. And again, we get sales tax collections, you know, a couple of months in arrears, um, for the state to process and get that money over to us. Baker Tilly was estimating for us a sales tax revenue coming in of about one point seven. You know, we've been at that one point five, one point six in past years. We're doing good with collections. I think, um, we just received, um, another payment for a month. And I, I think we're up like six to eight percent over where we were comparatively. I suppose that would have been in twenty-two. So, we'll look more into that, but collections are coming in good where we anticipated them to be. I've done a cash flow projection based on the average collections that we are receiving thus far. And we should be good throughout the life of the bonds, um, with those collections. And then we would also expect those collections to grow as well, just with inflation and pricing and, and all of that. But just not putting inflation on the collections, we should be good over the life of the bonds. So that's the sales tax portion. And, um, here's the P I R or that street improvement portion. You can see again, the principal, the coupon, the interest payments. And then we need to, um, have a property tax levy for a portion of this. We are, um, have special assessments that are levied on this. We've been collecting, those are coming into that fund. We will levy for the calendar year twenty twenty-five, seventy-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars. Um, the upper right, um, corner there, you can see that levy amount, that'll be the first one. When we put this together, we were anticipating that to be eighty-nine thousand. So with that savings and interest rate, it came in better than what they were thinking. So I feel very fortunate at a three point three percent rate right now. That's able to come down from eighty-nine thousand down to seventy-eight oh fifty-five. So, that'll be the plan for the P I R portion. Our credit rating I mentioned, we, um, talked with Moody's. They rate us each time we go out for a bond rating. They rate the current bonds at double A three and affirm all our prior, um, ratings at double A three. You can see the way Baker Tilly's laid this out, where we're graded, we are a very high credit, credit rating. So that is very good. We get the better interest rates that way when we have good credit. And that's, in other words, what we're saying. And here, um, credit strength. So why is that credit strong? Uh, city of Fergus Falls has a very strong financial position is what Moody's tells us. And we know that as well. You know, we, we're managing our reserves, um, planning for the future. We're also a regional economic center and that's important. Fergus Falls is an important community in the area and they recognize that as well. Where are some of our challenges? Maybe a little bit lower market values and income levels as compared across the nation to some peers. And factors that could lead to an upgrade. So what could make that better? It would take a pretty substantial shift in, um, economic expansion and, and to get income levels much higher. I've talked about this with them in the past as far as, okay, let us know, what are those targets where we could increase that credit rating? We're very locked in with demographics, pretty much, in cities our size in central Minnesota. But they do tell us what it would take to, um, to, to have an increase. And factors that could lead to a downgrade would be is if we depleted our, um, cash balances, our reserves that we have. You can see if we were to deplete that down to thirty-five percent, they would start, um, tanking us down on that credit rating. We are not doing that, but that's what they're saying, what would happen if, if we did. And then, of course, if you issued a lot of debt and leveraged much higher, that would have the same impact as well. Okay, so that is the end of the slides. So if you have any questions, otherwise, there is a resolution in your packet to approve, uh, this bond issuance for today. And then upon that approval, we'll have the city administrator sign on that bid. The, um, TD Securities did sign on that today. So to get that all complete.
Thanks, Bill. We'd look for that resolution.
I'll look for that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Anthony, questions for our finance director? Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Quaney.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Thank you.
That resolution is approved. Thank, thank you, Bill. All right, next item, we'll look for a introduction, our first reading of ordinance fifty-eight, eighth series, relating to cannabis zoning. Ralph, did you want to have comments to this before it's introduced or?
I would like to introduce this with a change, if I can.
You may.
Thank you. Um, so all items in section five, um, where it says interim use, switch to conditional use in a B six zone.
That we can do. So you are introducing this with that amendment?
Correct. Thank you.
So say that again, Laura. B six would be conditional use?
Correct, not interim.
Rather than interim use?
Yes.
Okay. Scott, I think, I believe, did you have a comment as well as that, does that take care of your comment that you?
I, yes, I understand the rationale here and I think that's fine.
Okay. So it's been introduced, what, um, plan is we'll get the ordinance changed. When it comes back in two weeks for a second reading, we'll allow public comment on, at that time. So, we're gonna get these changes made at this time. If anyone from the public has comments with, to their council members or to myself before then, feel free to do that. And we'll have public comment before our next, before the second reading of this. Yes.
I just wanted to point out that in this, uh, current version, nobody gets what they want. Nobody gets what they asked for initially. The, this satisfies a lot of things, answers a lot of questions. But it's not what the planning commission asked for, it's not what the cannabis committee asked for, it's not what the council voted on the last time around. So, I mean, there's been a lot of work done and after six months, this is what we've come up with that I think is the best we're gonna get. And, uh, as Kyle has told us, it'll be better to have something on the books than nothing. And it's important to move this forward.
Certainly. Thanks, thanks, God. Thanks to the work of Chief of Police for the public input, for the cannabis committee. I think you're right. Not, not, no one is completely satisfied, which probably means you're in a pretty decent place. And we're not the only community in the state of Minnesota that's grappling and, you know, the struggling with, with this issue too. So, all right, it's been introduced. We'll bring it back in two weeks for a second reading. Will involve public comment and we'll have a vote. Tonight, we have a presentation of claims in the amount of two million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director.
I'll look for the resolution, pay the bills.
Thanks, Jim. Would you like to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Quaney.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Uh, there is no old unfinished or new business that I'm aware of. Uh, just a couple miscellaneous announcements, just to make the public aware, everyone aware. Uh, July thirtieth, the mayor and council, city council seats, uh, filing period opens. The mayor's seat as well as one council seat from each ward is open this year. That filing period opens on July thirtieth and runs through Tuesday, August thirteenth, correct?
The packets aren't available before.
The packets will be available on July thirtieth at, when city hall opens. And with that, Lynn, do you have any other announcements? We're adjourned.